Is, can't be here tonight, so he left a email for me and I will read it so that we know what to expect. Subject Municipal Building Committee Report. Dear Selectman Walker, please accept this letter in my absence as an update for the Municipal Building Committee's progress. First, the MBC would like to congratulate Mr. Colby on his election to the Board of Selectmen. The MBC wishes to invite Selectman Colby to attend our next meeting. Date to be determined. They're gonna get their hooks right in.
It doesn't take long.
I would personally offer to meet with Selectman Colby to review the Municipal Building Committee work and progress, and that's probably worthwhile, meeting with Eric.
Yeah, I was hoping to make contact with Eric.
That would be good. The Municipal Building Committee has been working on a proposal project recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Next bullet. The Municipal Building Committee is addressing a response to the fire protection to land proposal offer. The MBC has issued a draft funding budget for proposal architecture engineering design phase fees to CPC and FinCom. The MBC is seeking a second opinion, which I think is great, of the project's budget we are prepared by a local contractor. The committee is available to discuss any questions that the Board of Selectmen may have. I would gladly offer to meet with any resident to explain work and conclusions that the Municipal Building Committee has arrived at. Anything that you have to offer seeing how you're on the committee?
They haven't scheduled a meeting recently.
Oh, you have?
Yes, absolutely.
The next committee meeting is gonna be next Thursday, March 5th, at 7:00 a.m. here at Town Hall, and everyone is welcome to come.
7:00 a.m.?
7:00 a.m., yes. And I also have a packet here to give to Selectman Colby. It's the report that the committee issued, actually, it's almost a year ago, well, July, and also a copy of the presentation that the committee made at a workshop in November, November 22nd. So just to give you some background information in preparation for meeting with Eric and hopefully coming to our meeting.
Thank you. Martha Taylor, a town planner, has asked the Board of Selectmen, as I understand it, we have proposed zoning amendments for May 19th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting before us. They are in the packet. And I think what you're asking for us to do tonight is to refer these back to you with a motion for your, for your public hearing?
Uh, yes. Under Mass General Law, there's a very strict process that has to be gone through for zoning amendments, and basically the planning board refers them to the Selectment for referral back for public hearing, and all of this has to be done in a very kind of tight prescribed timeframe. So, yes, tonight, the planning board is requesting that you refer these amendments back to the planning board for public hearing, which will be set. And I'm happy to go over any of these if you would like.
Right.
I'll second that.
Discussion. And part of my discussion might be, I mean, if this is going back to a public hearing at your board, if you folks really get into this and find, they're welcome to go to the board's public hearing and comment there, too.
Absolutely, or give, you know, give me comments.
Not like it's going without comment.
Right, right.
All right.
And give me, any comments before that, if you can, to attend the public hearing, which will probably be, I believe, April 1st is what we'll be aiming for. And any comments that come in before that or come out of the public hearing will be incorporated into the drafts that you have in front of you. Just as a little background, the reason these are being proposed this year came out of a joint meeting that the planning board had with the Zoning Board of Appeals and with Sam back on December 4th. There have been some issues that sort of, now that we have the accessory apartment by law and it's been in effect for a few years, we've done a few revisions, but there are still some, some things which needed some clarification, and so the board was requested to take a look at those. Eric Swan, in particular, had drafted a letter with some suggestions. And then there have been some things in some of our language and some of our definitions which continue to be sticking points, which Sam has, has requested the board address. So that's what's in this packet.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Did we vote?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome, Martha. We have some public hearings tonight, but let's take some of the rest of our new business until we get to that point. Tracy, do you want to do your Town Administrator's Report, or do you not have enough time you want me to move forward?
Um, maybe you can move through your new business.
Okay. John, you're here, right?
I am.
Are you there? You are. I can see you. We have an, this is, you can maybe explain this to me a little. I have a letter in here also. It's an acceptance of resignation of Amber Todd as Reserve Police Officer and as appointment as Res- as Reserve Dispatcher.
Correct.
Now, I can read the letter, but you can probably explain it better.
Yes. A while back, Amber Todd started out in our department as a Reserve Dispatcher. Usually what happens is that's kind of like the proving ground for anybody that wants to progress further up into an officer position. She chose to do that. She moved from a Reserve Dispatcher, went to the training, Reserve Officer Training, and was appointed a while, I don't remember the exact date, but a while back she was appointed as a Reserve Officer. It's by design a try-it-on-for-size period for both her and us, and she came to me with, you know, it wasn't quite the fit, it wasn't quite what she was ready to do right now. So she wanted to resign that position and go back to the Reserve Dispatcher position, which she's very proficient at, so.
So.
It's just, it's just a transition of, of appointment. And the second one in the letter is Reserve Officer Sanborn. Again, you know, he's been with us for a few months. He was going through the Field Training Officer Program that we have as a Reserve Officer. In that time, he also took a position in another local department, so there was kind of a conflict of commitment, and he's, he's really applying himself over there, so it wasn't really a viable fit to him to be going through the same process here. So he's intended his resignation to pursue opportunities at another department.
All right, so let's do this. In our letter, we have, as I see it, only Amber's.
Right. Yes.
Request. So we will take that first, and then we'll discuss the second part of what you're talking about.
Okay, sure.
And if there's a motion required, we'll take that, too. Now, if I understand this, you're asking us to accept her resignation and make a motion to accept her back as a Reserve Dispatcher?
Yes, accept her resignation from the position of Reserve Police Officer and then accept her position as, her new position, as a appointment for a Reserve Dispatcher.
And I would accept that motion from anyone?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, do you need a motion on the second part of what you were discussing?
I don't think so. I think that's more informative for the board, just to let you know what's going on with that.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Martha, you up again on Joanne Johnson? Joanne L. Johnson, President of the Newbury Port Coral Society, has a request for a banner on the backstop of the Newbury Upper Green from April 17th to May 4th, 2015, advertising the spring concert of May 2nd and May 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Might not have to say anything. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I encourage all of you to come to the concert.
We have a public hearing, National Grid, New England Plan, 18055, 724-B, Orchard Street. National Grid proposes to install a new pole. The new pole will be located on town property on the north side of Orchard Street and will be labeled 28-84.
Correct.
And you're asking us for a proposal to put the pole on town property?
Yes, permission to install a stub pole to Guy Pole 28.
Now, Damon, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Could you say your name, please?
Sam Ang, National Grid, North Hanover.
Last name?
E.A.N.G.
Thank you.
Yep. So it wasn't clear from the plan, what, are you replacing a pole or are you putting in a guy pole? It wasn't entirely clear.
It's, uh, it's gonna be a stub pole. I think we're replacing the tree wire, removing tree wire and installing stub pole.
Just for kicks, I gotta ask, what's a tree wire?
It's a guy wire that is connected to a tree.
Living tree?
Right. So we want to take it out and just install a pole in, uh, Guy Pole 28.
And so this would be basically tensioning the poles back across the street?
Correct.
Now I understand why it's going.
Yeah.
From the design, I thought, why would they run the wires across the road and then back across the road? So, yeah. I'm, uh...
Are there many tree wires left?
Uh...
I mean, anywhere around, or is it something that's done quite a bit?
I didn't look in the area. I can find out for you, and I can probably...
I'd be just curious, if you like. All right. Motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All set? Thanks.
Thank you. Moving through new business, because we do have a, another public hearing at 7:30. We have a one-day liquor license for the Pine Grove School PTA, the second annual Pine Grove silent and live auction, giddy up and bid at Governor's Academy Saturday, March 21st, 2015, from 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. And this is a one-day liquor license. Everything in order?
Everything's in order.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Would you like to hear a little bit what it's about, just so they...
We could discuss it after the motion.
Okay. All right.
I'll second it.
Gotcha.
I would like to hear what this...
All right, great, great.
All right, now we're talking.
Big smile up there.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
Excited to get there.
Where can you present it? Um, you can buy them online at our website, or I can give that to you.
Could you say that into the microphone?
This is, this is good advertisement for you guys, so go ahead.
Could you say your name? It's Ariane, A.R.I.A.N., Haley, H.A.L.E.Y. And I'm the Secretary for the Pine Grove PTA.
Great.
Can you say, where, can you get the tickets again?
Uh, it's the Pi- it's...
Into the microphone, though.
Oh, sorry. Pine Grove PTA. You know what? I don't know. I'll have to look it up for you. Actually, I'm nervous. I'll find it.
It's okay. It's okay. Hold on for a second. I think, what do I have in my packet? What's in the packet, guys? It was a nice...
Pine Grove PTA Gmail, that's Gmail.
That's what I thought, yep.
That's the email address. That's not the website, though. It's like a blog spot. I just don't know exactly what it is.
All right, that's good. So, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it. Good luck. One-day liquor license, Protection Fire Company Number Two. It is for the, it looks for the Triton Grad Adventure Trivia Night, Saturday, March 13th, 2015, 7 o'clock to 11:00 p.m. Everything in order?
Everything is in order.
Uh, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have, we need to review, approve, sign a 2015 business license, and it's a renewal as follows. It's for Elizabeth Moulton, Cowie Martha Moulton, DBA Surf Land at the Island Bait and Tackle L.C., LLC, Plum Island Boulevard, General Business. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tracy, you could probably do your Town Administrator's Report.
Sure.
That's Steve, sorry we're making you wait, where I... Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to provide the board with an update on the Plum Island Sewer System issues. I had an opportunity to speak with Mayor Holliday yesterday, and will be attending a meeting this Friday with our legislators to kind of bring everyone up to speed and talk about possible solutions. The city is continuing their work to address the issues with the system and is asking all residents to help by clearing the candy cane air vents of snow and to make sure that they notify the city if they should hear any of the vents hissing continuously, because I guess that could be a sign of a frozen valve. So they asked them to notify them. They're providing temporary housing for anyone who is a Plum Island resident that's been impacted, and anyone that experiences backup should contact the Water and Sewer Business Office. They provided all this information on their website. We're gonna try and link our site to theirs. And also, if someone should experience a backup and it's not during regular office hours, to call the Newbury Port Police Department. I just wanted to note also, on February 17th, the Board of Fire Engineers elected Nathan Jeffrey Walker as the new chief of the, of the Newbury Fire Department. He has been sworn in, and we have notified the State Fire Marshal's Office, so it's official right away. The snow and ice account is probably not gonna be a shock to anyone here at the table, but it is currently in a deficit position, and we have not received all of the bills to date, that, all of the expenses that have been incurred to date. So it's, basically, we're looking at probably around $60,000 deficit today. I expect it to continue to increase, but I do need a vote of the board to declare the, you know, the, the emergency deficits to allow us to continue spending. We, we have the authority to do that under the general laws, but we do have to come up with the deficit by June 30th, so, you know, we've got to keep it in the backs of our minds. We've got to fund that, so that's when having that free cash reserve available for these types of emergencies comes in very handy. So I don't know if you want to vote.
So this is, the, the Section 31D I have in front of me, and it's Mass General Law, and we have the ability to make a motion to accept the fact that we have a deficit and...
A motion to declare an emergency and allow for deficit spending. The Finance Committee will also make a similar motion.
So is it a snow emergency, or...
Mm-hmm.
It's an emergency that requires money that we don't have to...
Yeah. I just wasn't sure what kind of emergency we call.
No, you're good. It was a good question. You got it. Want to make the motion?
Uh, move to declare a snow emergency so we continue to plow our streets.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just to provide you with a brief budget update, the department managers have all submitted their budget requests to me. Hearings were conducted, and right now, all I'm waiting for is the Triton budget information, which I expect sometime early next week. Once I've got that all together, I'll put together a, a budget booklet document for you to review, and we'll plan on probably meeting with the Finance Committee around the 24th, your meeting on the 24th of March, if, if that works, somewhere around there. That would, we'll hold our joint meeting. And also, wanted to give you an update on the DPW Director's search. We did receive over, I want to say we received 14 or 15 resumes. Five of them were highly qualified, so we narrowed it down, conducted the interviews. At this point, we evaluated the final, the five candidates who were interviewed based on, we had about 11 different criteria, and today, conducted a, a final interview and have decided to offer the position to James Saret, who is the...
All right.
Acting DPW Director. He has been the foreman of the department for many years, so we're, we're looking forward to working with him.
Glad to hear that.
And that's all I have.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Minutes?
I think so.
Let's try it. Come on, Steve, we'll get right up there. Steve is from Borrego. He is going to speak to us about a special permit application, and it's for a solar energy generating facility at 136 Main Street. And I guess our mission, if we choose to accept it tonight, is to accept the submission of the special permit and to set a date for the special hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Have you ground truth of submission yet, Martha?
Yes, I already did.
Yeah, just real quick.
Uh, yes. Steve gave me a preliminary copy of the submission, and I reviewed that and did send him comments last Friday, and...
Here's a copy of the...
Comments that I submitted. And talking with Steve this afternoon, when he brought the submission in, he assures me that everything has been addressed, so...
Yep. Some of the same issues we had with the previous one are they different?
It, you know, most of them were just, and again, this was just reviewing it for completion, you know, not, not for a technical review of any sort.
I got you.
But it was just kind of trying to make sure that everything was there and that there were no, you know, glaring inconsistencies.
Thank you very much, Martha. Steve?
Okay. My name is Steve Long from Borrego Solar, and we're here tonight because we're asking for a special permit. We're resubmitting our application. We withdrew it at the last meeting, and I, I don't know if any, do I need to explain the reasons? Should I go through that? Okay. Well, we're resubmitting, and basically, it's the same application that we submitted previously. We've added a lot of things to it based on going through the Bashaw project, so I think it's totally complete. Those comments that we had from Bashaw have been incorporated into this application. The project is the same. It hasn't changed. So I can briefly go over for the member who wasn't here before. It's on four parcels owned by the Yes Air family. There's Main Street here, Route 95 here, Courtney Drive. There's 93 acres total. The site will be accessed off Main Street. It'll come in off Ruth Yes Air's driveway. Then there'll be a gravel access to the back of the lot here. The system will be located in this wooded area in the back of the property. It's surrounded by wetlands. That's what kind of bounds it to that area. Within the fence, the system is about 11 acres. Clearing required for this is about 16. There'll be approximately 9,000 solar panels located within that fenced area. There'll be two equipment pad areas, which will take the DC power. That DC power will run underground to a point here, then it'll run above ground to a utility connection within the utility right of way, right next to Route 95. We've submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission, and we'll be going back to them in March to go over comments that they had previously with this application. So, that's it briefly. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Should we make a motion first?
I think, I think make a mo-
Motion to accept the application?
Yep. For special permit?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
There's gonna be a lot of discussion in the future.
Yeah, yeah. So not, not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to set the date for the public hearing, and I think March 24th would probably be best, but I'll take it as a motion.
Yep. Motion for March 24th, 7:30?
Do we have something else? Weren't you, wasn't Martha looking at doing something on the 24th, too?
Budget meeting with the Finance Committee, the joint meeting.
Joint meeting with the Finance.
I can see if we can do that, the, the following meeting, if you'd prefer.
All right, good.
Okay, yeah, 7:30. Second, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks for fitting me in.
Okay.
3:24.
Okay, I think that we can...
Motion to open the...
Yes.
Public hearing for, continued from February 18th, 2015, the joint meeting with the Newbury Planning Board for the 76 Newbury Turnpike Project by Michael Houghton Roots and Wings Healing Center.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Easy on the table.
Martha, you gonna pull a chair up? There's one right behind you. Martha, at your meeting before you adjourned, you okay the special permit? Are you okay? You went through the site plan review and found it to be sufficient?
Correct.
All right, so this is only containing our side of the issue?
Right. The, the planning board needs to do the same thing, to open their public hearing.
Okay.
And vote to...
All right. To, to do with this or to do with their site plan review?
To do with the site plan review.
All right, that's all I, okay, good. So we are, we are a true site, joint meeting.
Yes.
So we'll take a motion from you guys to open your side of this.
Yeah, the, let me make a motion, John, to open the public hearing. So moved. Second down there. All in favor?
Aye.
We're official.
Very good.
So we are open. Martha, how would probably going forth, do you want to handle yours first, or you want us to look at ours first? What do you think might be best?
Um, it's really up to you, whatever, ever order you'd like to do it in. I guess my, my two suggestions would be, first, if, if you want, since the public hearing is still open, to see if there's anybody else who would like to speak.
Okay.
And then I can go over anything that you'd like me to discuss regarding the hearing, regarding the decisions I have reviewed with Town Council.
Okay, why don't we do that? And Jay, if you can, can you slide that microphone a touch towards Martha, so she can certainly be heard? Would anyone in the audience, or does anyone in the audience have anything they would like to discuss about the 76 Newbury Port Turnpike development? So not hearing or seeing anyone that would like to discuss, we will open it up for you, Martha, maybe to head into probably the planning boards, what, and we'll do that side first, unless you want us, you all set?
It's totally...
Want us to...
Letting the planning board get in first makes sense.
Totally up to you.
All right. You figured I was gonna go first, huh? Want us to?
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
So the planning, planning board decision of site plan review basically has been reviewed by Town Council and by, by the planning board members. It reviews the, basically, the background of the project, the materials that were submitted for consideration, and then the site plan review criteria that the board discussed at last, last week's meeting. And essentially, the, the conclusion was that the project as proposed meets the criteria. There are four conditions here. First, it's contingent on final approval by the Conservation Commission, and I know that they have approved it and are, will be issuing an order of conditions. And this says that if, if there's anything different in the order of conditions that would require a change, then the site plan will have to be changed in accordance with that. It also allows the planning board to go on the site. The site plan review approval is not to be construed as approval from any other board, and at the discretion of the Building Commissioner, he, he may require this to be recorded at the registry. And duration of approval is two years from the date of issue to completion. So, the planning board would need to make a motion to approve the decision of site plan review. And then I move to approve the site plan review application, which I'm in the same series for, Turnpike, Newbury, the applicant being Michael Houghton, Roots, to Wing, Horta, and Haley.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven. Motion is passed. Congratulations, Michael.
So, I have three copies here for you to sign. John Weiss is our approved assignatory, but since he's not able to be here tonight, I'd like signatures from all of you, please. And then that'll be filed with the town clerk tomorrow, and the, um, appeal period will start the day after that, so twenty days of the period.
Much the same then with ours?
Uh, much the same. Format is, is pretty similar.
And the motion should almost be made with the same words, seventy-six Newbury Port Turnpike, and, but it's gonna contain the two conditions, right?
Right. Um, yours, um, the background information is the same, um, and this, your approval is based on the criteria in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, um, by law.
Yeah.
And, um, there are two conditions in here, one of which basically incorporates conditions of any other, um, permit or approval that's granted, so-
So-
-Conservation Commission or the site plan review. So, so basically, that, those are incorporated into your decision.
Should we also, I'm sorry.
So, if Damon made the decision that included the location and everything else, should he actually read the conditions as part of our motion?
Um, no, I think he could just say, "subject to the conditions."
Okay, good. Alright.
Um, so, motion to approve the project of, uh, the special permit for the decision on seventy-six Newbury Port Turnpike, Newbury, Mass, applicant, Michael Houlihan, Roots to Wings, Yoga and Healing, and the conditions contained in that, uh, finding.
My only question is, should we put in on approval of CONCON?
They've already approved it.
Okay.
So, and essentially, that, that language is covered by the site plan review language.
Withdraw it.
Alright, so, second?
Second?
Second. Um, any more discussion, anything, guys? Um, all those, go ahead.
I just said, I think the plan looks good, the engineering seems to come together.
Certainly does.
And it's an asset.
Certainly an asset to the plans.
Yep.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got it. Good for you.
Now the real where he starts, Michael. He's not gonna build it.
Been doing a lot of that.
Yeah, haven't we, huh?
Alright.
Do we sign and then move to close the public hearing?
Uh, yes.
Alright.
You guys all signed?
We're all signed.
Wow.
So, Mike, as far as the approvals are concerned, um, you can pick up the decision after the appeal period is, is done, so that'll be, you know, twenty days from the day after tomorrow. Um, and, uh, they'll need to be recorded at the registry, and-
I record that?
Yes, yeah.
One, two, three.
Yeah, for now.
Once that's done, then I do go make that comment.
Yes, you'll need to, you need to make sure that you have your order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, um, go to tell, um, your separate system of Google.
Yeah. Grab one.
Thank you.
So, motion to close the public hearing?
Second, the motion.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
George.
Michael, good luck.
Thank you.
We have to close our hearing.
Oh, sorry, go.
I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, George.
Good luck.
Now, where were we? Old Business?
Um, if you're interested, yeah. We just need to get this down to you.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, too.
Yep. I think we have, um- Old Business and the two letters?
That's the, should we announce that it's for the auction site?
I'll let you do that. Why don't we do that after, um, we do this?
After this.
After Old Business. Alright, we have some old business. Um, we have before us tonight an update of the memorial tribute to Dave Mountain, Vice Selectman Jespersen, and Marlene Schrader, Vice President of Parker River Clean Water. So, do you wanna move that microphone to you, uh, Marlene, your?
No, I'm, uh-
Alright, great.
Okay.
I don't know if you have copies if we'll find.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I take it away, Damon?
I think so.
Marlene Schrader, one anchorway, Newbury. I think that, uh, you can read here that, uh, I have talked with the Byfield Water District who owns the little piece of land, uh, on the river right side of the Central Street Dam. River right always means when you're looking at a river downstream, the right side and the left side, no matter which way you're looking, that's how you talk about it. And you are probably familiar with that piece of land as the place where people stand and fish, or sometimes take out canoes. And, uh, JR and I attended the water board meeting, and they approved enthusiastically a, a motion to, uh, allow that there. We would meet with, um, Paul Colby to make sure, there's one area where the water board removes a piece of the-
Guard.
-guard rail to drive down, so that we don't interfere with that.
Yep.
So, it should be no problem. And you can see in the picture, uh, a general idea. This is not the exact thing, but it's what we are interested in. A very rustic-style bench that would fit in with the natural setting of the river, not interested in a, you know, a polished granite type of thing, rests on two boulders, and, um, probably, uh, it would be seating for two people to sit comfortably on it. And the inscription that we're suggesting is, um, is there for you to read. Dave Mountain, friend of the river, servant to the town. And, uh, obviously, if you didn't wish to participate in this, we could just limit it to friend of the river, but I surely hope that we'll be able to work together on this. And, uh, I don't know if you have any questions? You can see at the end that we've received donations on behalf of, uh, of this, and, uh, we can, can proceed forward without a monetary, uh, requirement of any kind from the, from the town. And I'll be glad to, Damon and I will be glad to ask, answer any questions. Damon, why don't you add anything you might want?
Well, I was gonna say that we should probably make a motion to, uh, participate in this memorial, and then discuss it.
Go ahead, make the motion.
So, I, I make a motion that the Selectmen approve participating in the memorial.
Second.
Any discussion? All, all, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Um, well, the only discussion-
Oh, go ahead.
-that I have is if we would like to also continue to pursue the naming of the trails, A Trail, for David as well, on town property or somewhere else, or if we'd like to just have this be the, the only piece that we do.
Keep them separate.
Yeah, keep-
When we get one, we'll bring it up.
Keep them separate, okay.
Yep. The only thing I'd like to add to this is if you need a hand moving that, I can use my crane and set it for you. Okay?
Fantastic.
Yep.
So, and yeah, I think, I think it's a, a great memorial, and I'm very appreciative of all the work that Marlene did and, uh, and the Parker River Clean Water Association.
Yep, so.
I think also that, um, benches like this are very significant, they're special. My dad played a lot of golf at Old Newbury Golf Course, so he has a bench at Old Newbury Golf Course, and it's, it's, it's great. So, when I'm out there, cutting the rough, I get to look at Dad's bench. So, when people are at the river, people are fishing, David will be remembered, so. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, obviously, the weather will, uh, play a big part in this, but, uh, Damon and I will keep you posted, and Chuck, thank you for that offer.
Absolutely.
That will probably be helpful.
And you can tell us.
Yes. Indeed.
You can get the truck down there, eh?
Excuse me?
You can get the truck down there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, correspondence. Um, there's a letter in our packet from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable. It is a petition of Comcast Cable Communications LLC to establish and adjust the basic services, tier programming, equipment installation rates for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts served by Comcast Communities LLC that are currently subject to rate regulations by the DDC fourteen dash fourteen, dash four, I mean. As I looked at this, from what I got out of it, and I probably will just touch upon it, 'cause it could get a little more complicated, and I think if you desire any more information, you could come to Ellen and ask her in the Selectman's office, but it seems that the Department of Telecommunications and Cable Department will hold a public, and, a public hearing pursuant to general law, one sixty-six AA fifteen, two oh seven, CCM six oh three, to investigate proposed basic service tier programming, equipment, and installation rates for all of the rate-regulated communities in Massachusetts served by Cable Communications LLC, and in response, and the hearing will be held at ten AM on Wednesday, April twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, in the room one E at one hundred Washington Street, Boston. It is a formal hearing conducted under Samoa Mass General Law. And as I understand it, I think as I read forward, and I'm not so sure, is it the same thing, Ellen, as you go into the next part of this correspondence, that, uh, you actually need to petition before the public hearing to be heard?
Well-
Well, anyway, let's-
This is clear as mud.
As we, if we go forward in-
I believe that's correct.
If we go forward in this, we'll, we'll take and, um, if, if someone wants to understand this more, they can certainly come into the Selectman's office and ask for some more information. And that's what we've done now, because correspondence is supposed to alert people to things they might be interested in. So, um, that being said, um, review of meeting minutes, February fifth, two thousand fifteen. Who was there, guys?
Damon.
Chuck?
Me. Motion to approve is ready.
Alright.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Um, warrants? We have warrants?
Hold on, it's not work. Warrants.
I saw a stack.
So, we can, we, we can leave, we can leave now? Marlene?
May I, I forgot one thing.
Oh, you knew it, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this one-
While we're waiting for the warrants, it's good.
I, I find it so much after.
Can you get up to that microphone again? Yep. Thanks.
Uh, this Sunday at one o'clock is the Parker Rivers Annual Meeting, to which, of course, you are invited. It's open to the public, anyone who's interested, but we have a particularly good speaker. It is Tom French, who heads the, uh, Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Uh, you've had to listen many times to different plans and so forth, where they said, "Have you contacted the natural heritage?" And it's Tom's program that, that, uh, he runs that program. A very interesting speaker, a very dynamic person.
It's like, uh, it's like the top, the top, the top.
Oh, he'll, he'll be talking, uh, one of our projects happens to be, uh, research and, and support for the rare Blanding's turtle. Uh, most of that habitat is found in Groveland and Georgetown, and Tom will speak on, uh, generally on the purpose of natural heritage, and also on a program called Head Starting That, which has involved many local schools. I'm not sure if Newbury's is involved, but, uh, I think there are about twenty different schools that are working on that.
Triton is.
Yeah, Triton is, I know that.
Marlene, were you still up there?
Yes, please.
Um, can you inform us, because I think it's kind of important, because, 'cause he was a great friend of mine, still is a great friend of mine, and you've had a lot of relationship, and I think you've found him to be a great guy to work with.
Are we speaking of Wayne?
Yeah. Why don't you inform, and then I'll fill out a little more.
Alright. Um, I often attend the Advisory Council meetings of the Natural Heritage Program, and through the, those, I've often spoken with Wayne McCollum, who, uh, is the Director of Fish and Wildlife, I think is the way it's, it's phrased. And he is retiring now after many years, and the fact that you can continue to do your job expertly through many different administrations, that alone signifies a, a person who's, one, very determined about their work, and, um, is able to persuade others of it, and I think Jeff can speak to that.
Marlene, thank you. Um, I met Wayne a long time ago, probably over some of the issues on the gun bills and other things, and Wayne and I became fast friends. Wayne, like, uh, Marlene has said, has been there a very long time and has seen a lot of changes, and he's been able to, you know, integrate and get synergy between many different programs. And these integrated programs that inherited this synergy have grown in the state of Massachusetts to include a myriad of different issues, from stocking fish to, um, you know, improving regulations that, that, that protect, and also to enhance, and also to purchase. He's a great sportsman, he's been a great person for the environment, and Wayne will be sorely, sorely missed. I'm sure they'll have someone to replace him that is, that is, um, a person, hopefully, that can fill some very big shoes. Second announcement, and I think he'll do a very good job, because he holds also some of the same feelings that Wayne has about integrating, uh, all different outlooks and, and vision for fish and wildlife. We have a new Commissioner of Fish and Wildlife, and that's George Peterson. Uh, George was a legislator, George is a sportsman, he's an outdoorsman, he understands the fiscal component of things, which makes it really neat, too, and he'll work well with all the different, um, boards and agencies that we have within the Division of Fish and Wildlife, and, um, all the other boards that fall under, uh, George's. So, we're gaining one and losing one. I think that's a good way to look at it.
And I will say off the record purposely, that, uh, when you hear the employees say how happy they are at Peterson's-
Yeah.
-employment, that says a lot, when the, you know, the, the troops in the trenches are-
Yeah. Well, George wasn't a, like, a political, he was a good appointment, good appointment.
That's right, and they're very happy. They're looking forward to working with them, at least the ones that I've spoken with.
It'll be good, it'll be good.
That's good.
Alright, so, uh-
Did we make the motion to approve the warrants?
Do, do we need that? Oh, so, guys?
Motion to approve the warrants we just signed.
Oh, yes. Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, where are we? Meeting updates.
So, the first thing, someone handed me the, uh, the address where you can get those tickets for the Pine Grove. So, it's pinguergroveschoolpta.blogspot.com if you want to buy those raffle tickets.
Ah.
Um, and then there, I've attended a number of meetings since the last time we were all together. Um, there are a few things that the, the school board is looking for us to decide, which I think we can authorize Tracy to decide or to put forward for us, but there's a, a discussion of looking into fees for sports at Whittier, which we need to look at whether or not we want to advocate for, and also about how the apportionment of stadium, the cost of the new stadium, if we approve doing that, will be divided between the towns. Uh, there has been a motion made that it should be split in thirds, and another motion made that it should be split as according to the, uh, regional agreement. Um, and then the third thing that we need to look at is the stadium fee, the stadium is designed to create revenue, and how that revenue would be used. There, the superintendent would like the revenue to go into an escrow account to- There, the superintendent would like the revenue to go into an escrow account to pay for the renewal of the field and the track when that occurs, which happens on a seven or fourteen year cycle. Whereas our FinCom has proposed that all the revenues go into paying down the debt. I personally think that we should use a certain amount to pay down the debt and having some in an escrow to make sure that the whole thing doesn't fall apart at the end might make some sense, so that's something we may want to discuss in the future. But it's definitely the most economically viable to pay down the debt first, but I'd hate to see us in a position where we spend three million dollars on a new stadium and then can't maintain it because we get into a budget crunch.
So these, you're making us aware of these tonight so that we have some ongoing ability to think about them?
Yeah.
Because some of these things will come before us again and I'm sure, does Triton intend on having another budget committee, meeting?
Tomorrow night, the public comment, tomorrow night.
Is it, is that the final one?
No, it's just a public comment.
Okay, good.
Public comment on the budget.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
And the stadium is sort of separate than the budget, but I just wanted to bring it to you guys because we, I think we should probably ask Tracy to, we either need to meet and talk about it or ask, authorize Tracy to decide how to proceed with it.
I think if that, if that decision is going to come to reside with us, we need to sit down and think a lot more about it.
Okay.
And probably have some discussion, Tracy, with maybe the Finance Committee, a joint meeting or... What are other towns doing? The other towns voted to vote, go along with the formula?
Not yet. They've been asked by the school committee to come back with a decision on it.
So we should all get together and...
Well...
Kick it around.
It's certainly, I mean, I know a little because I went to a couple of the meetings, it might be hard for JR. Chuck, you've been to a few of the meetings.
I have.
JR went to this one, I mean, it, there's, there's a lot of thought that goes into this.
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring it up. I also wanted to mention that I've looked at, in pursuant of the generating more revenues, I've been talking to a company called Blue Water Capital about some potential for solar developments on town property, like the dump, the roof of the Newbury Elementary School, and some sites that the, that Triton owns, in the hopes of generating some income for the town outside of our tax base. And so we've started those discussions, hoping to continue to move them forward.
Yeah, we've discussed the dump before and there were some issues with the permeable barrier and they didn't want to...
And the slope.
Yeah, so...
So they're aware of the slope, these people think that new technologies might allow for a much bigger installation there than...
Certainly be interested in looking at it.
Yeah, so we, I talked with Martha and Tracy today about the potential of moving that forward, at least exploratorily, doesn't cost us...
And the question that I asked Damon when he was discussing some of this, I would love to see how the formulas go on rooftop solar installations now with winters like this winter.
Yeah, how the snow and the...
You have to have, that has to be one heavily engineered roof, you know, so be curious.
Yeah. And then I had a couple questions. One was the Van Lone project that came up in the last meeting, if we need to talk to Bruce and Lenny about shepherding that through the legislature?
We've already had conversations with them. I wasn't sure whether or not we had to bring it before town meeting again for another affirmative vote and...
With town council?
Senator Tarr's office said we do...
Do need to bring it before?
Because the, the vote was more than two years old, I think, so we will bring it before the town meeting in May and then they'll take it from there.
I just wasn't sure if we really needed to hound our, our representative since it died in committee.
Right.
So that has to go before town meeting again, huh?
It does. I didn't, I wasn't sure that it did, but it does.
And then you were looking at who owns Larkin Road Bridge a while back and I wasn't sure if that had ever been found out or clarified?
Yeah, the surveying has been done, I have not seen the report yet.
Okay. Found it in my notes.
I see him every morning, I'll ask him for it.
Sounds good. And then we get to the, I guess, the issue of that, you know, do we want to look at a trail when it comes up for, for David and do we want to, does someone want to think about a tribute for Mike who was also serving?
Exactly.
Yep.
You know, I think, my first thought was maybe since we're going to have a new police station and he served as the, you know, he's invested in that, that something in the police station might make sense, but I don't, I didn't know Mike nearly as well as I knew David, so wasn't sure, you know.
Good thought. Yep.
We had, we had had some discussion and I think maybe, you know, we'll get some other folks to think about if there's a place that Mike might have liked within the town that we don't know about, that might be town owned property such as what this happened. And maybe it's more appropriate to be at the new complex when it's built, the police station when it's built, or maybe at a fire station, but we'll, we'll figure. See what people like to do. Chuck, can you also maybe work on that a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, now the trail, do you want to discuss that now, so you have a feel for it?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if people thought one thing was enough or we should do something that's, you know, this is on Byfield Waters property, should we do something that is entirely within towns purview to regulate? Or should we just say one memorial is enough and move on? I wasn't sure what you guys felt or thought, what we'd like to do. So, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time trying to find the right trail and talking to everyone if, if the board is not interested in...
Why don't we put you on the line a little bit? What do you really think? I mean, thinking about, is one enough or is two? Think about what, you know, what do you feel?
I like the, I mean, I think this bench is beautiful and it's going to be in a very nice location, but I feel, you know, it, since he did a lot with the planning board and some of the trails are in plans that he worked on, I, I think it is appropriate to name those trail, A Trail after him, since he was heavily involved in it, but I'm not, you know, if the board feels that it's, that one is enough, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. So, I guess I, I don't see it as inappropriate.
We need a list of trails that we have too, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how many we have right now.
It's, it's funny, I actually, I was almost thinking it's almost more important to have one, but I don't have any problem at all with, with the board wanting to do a trail either. You know, personally, I'm thinking one side, but you know...
Well, that's sort of the, the other side of it, is one thing more symbolic, we get more people and focused on the one thing.
I have no, there's no value in my thinking, you know, it's just, whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine with it.
All right. Do you have any thoughts or feelings?
No, I'm not opposed to it.
So, well, bring it up again, have time to think about it.
Okay.
When I go, just do one.
Just one for you. All righty. Sorry for all those up there.
I don't know, mosh, in the mosh.
Copper arc in the mosh.
Yeah, in the mosh.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.